Please rise. The September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council is now in session. Warden Liz Danielson presiding.
Please be seated. Morning, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty Twenty Michisoggi territory. And in the traditional territory of the Michisoggi and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda for today, please? Councillors Fury and Burton.
Moved by councillor Fury, second by councillor Burton, be resolved that the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Halliburton County Council agenda be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Seeing none, could I have a motion or a mover in a seconder to adopt the minutes of August the sixteenth? Councillor Shell and McCackney.
Moved by councillor Shell, second by councillor McCackney, be it resolved that the minutes from the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. Also, could I have a mover in a seconder to adopt the minutes of the June fourteenth committee of the whole meeting? Councillor Ryle. Seconded by councillor Burton.
Moved by councillor Ryle, seconded by councillor Burton, be it resolved that the minutes from the June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Committee of the Whole be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. We have no business arising from previous meetings. So we'll move into delegations. And this morning, we have Luba Cargill to talk to us about the apple tree identification project.
Good morning, Warden. Councillors, mayors, deputy mayors. Thank you very much for the opportunity for me to speak to you about apples again. And we'll have an update, but there's some people that are interested in the in the complete presentation, so I hope you'll bear with me. I am from Halliburton and I am a volunteer and I'm here, as you know, to talk about apples. And I'm very thankful that that we have this opportunity to be able to to discuss these types of things with our with our municipal and county councillors. The Apple Tree Identification Project, ATIP Step One, started in mid mid-April this year when Professor Andrew Gordon, Director of U-Links, called me about a U-Links proposal I had submitted. The initial question was, why do apple trees grow in Halliburton when there is a short growing season and harsh winters? From then, Professor Gordon and U-Links have helped and provided support for the apple project every step of the way. The ultimate goal is to increase food security and achieve an apple industry in Halliburton. Apples have a long history in the county. Steve Hill, curator of the Halliburton Highlands Museum, said every homestead in Halliburton had an apple orchard. He provided agricultural fair posters. This one is from eighteen ninety-two. And it shows that crab apples were part of the. There were five apples and then crab apples were part of the prize list for the fair in eighteen ninety-two. And by nineteen oh seven, there were twelve apples were required, four varieties, three of each on a plate. It for the nineteen oh seven agricultural fair. So this shows that apples have been in Halliburton for over a century with us. There are many apple trees in Halliburton County in many, many places, and that they include Abbey Gardens, Halliburton Forest, Halliburton Highlands Land Trust, Barnum Creek Nature Reserve, and Sir Sam Ski Hill, just to name a few. There are also beautiful apple trees along the rail trail. There are old heritage apple orchards and newly planted apple orchards. These apple trees grow on private property, municipal and county lands, local farms, as well as overgrown forested areas. For decades, the old apple trees have often been forgotten and neglected. Yet remarkably, these old apple trees and old orchards can continue to survive and produce apples. And around this time of year, you can actually see the apple trees with apples on them. Nobody taking care of them. This is where ATIP comes in. The purpose of this study is to increase resident awareness of existing old apple trees. Highlight the need for their care and maintenance. Renew an existing food resource. Increase the availability of locally grown and produced products. Increase food security. Help reduce environmental cost of food transportation from outside the county. Provide data for Halliburton County GIS map to add an apple tree layer. Provide Halliburton master gardeners with information for further research. Provide additional products for the farmer's market. Provide increased apple supply for Search Applesauce Project. And provide additional tourism and opportunities with the Apple Blossom Tour. ATIP has four steps. There is, ATIP stands for Apple Tree Identification Intensification, Increase and Industry. So Step One, Apple Tree Identification Project. At the start of the project, we expected to find ten locations of apple trees. We are now at a hundred and seventy apple tree locations that have been identified. With including ten orchards, the largest having two hundred apple trees. And every day more apple tree locations are being identified. Residents are now sending the emails with photos of their apples and their apple trees to be added to the to the identification project. And upon identification and with the owner's permissions, the apple trees are being visually confirmed. And research is being conducted on the environment of the trees through the U-Links Community-Based Research Program with Toronto Metropolitan University Research Student Carmen Gallia and Professor Stephanie Melus and Professor Leslie Campbell. And that's the first step, the identification is is moving along nicely. Step two is the work with the arborists and the master gardeners. And with the apple tree owner's permission and desire, they are referred to Maureen Moore, master gardener, working with the Halliburton Master Gardeners Heritage Apple Project. This project is in partnership with the University of Guelph's Ontario Heritage and Feral Apple Project. And the university researchers were in Halliburton in early August this year and collected hundreds of samples from old orchards in in the county for DNA testing to determine their cultivars. And the master gardeners and the arborists also provide advice on care and maintenance of the apple trees. Step three was to increase the number of apple trees in the county. And this is an ongoing process which ATIP would like to intensify. And this includes educating residents on the benefits of planting trees and harvesting the apples. A second U-Links community-based research project to study apple tree economic cost benefit analysis is underway with Trent University student Wesley Ford and Professor Raymond Yip Ching. And that's a very exciting one where they they intend to study the actually the cost of actually growing an apple tree and 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 the the obvious results as well as compare with other areas that that have this kind of industry. So Step Four is to create an apple industry. It would be utilized to provide nonprofit organizations already existing in the county with apples to increase local food security. And it could also be the basis of creating an industry based on apple products from Halliburton County. Contributing to local business and tourism opportunities such as the Apple Blossom Tour we're planning for May of two thousand twenty-four. A local apple industry and apple blossom tour could become part of a year-round county-wide agritourism initiative, which could also include tours of maple syrup producers, farm gate sellers, garlic growers, honey producers, and others. I've chatted with Scott Oval. A Director of Economic Development and Tourism who indicated the county tourism department would be receptive to explore how this could work together and how to market a broader agritourism narrative. So there is there is great potential here. There's our our project, and then there's all sorts of other groups that are having the projects, and we we could combine it all together. I think there'd be there'd be extra synergy with everything. So ATIP is asking county council for four things. A letter of support from the county of Halliburton for the ATIP Halliburton program. Two, for the county of Halliburton as apple tree owners to participate in ATIP specifically to identify the apple trees on county property and refer the locations to ATIP Halliburton for further study by U-Links and master gardeners. And this process of identification by county staff could be conducted through a memo to park staff to note any apple trees on county property as they are conducting routine maintenance on county property so as not to impose any additional burden on the department. And for county council to commit to planting more trees when the opportunity for new landscaping arises in areas where apple trees are appropriate. If a new tree is going to be planted for aesthetic purposes by the county, it may as well aid in feeding the community. And for council to help increase local self-sufficiency by allowing community groups to pick apples from the identified trees and county land for use by local nonprofit organizations such as Search Applesauce Project Food Net, the Central Food Bank. Number three, ATIP Halliburton would like to invite the county to participate in Apple Blossom Tour two thousand twenty-four during the last two weeks in May by mapping and promoting county apple tree locations so residents and tourists can enjoy the apple blossoms. And four, ATIP Halliburton would like to ask the county for assistance with creating and promoting an apple tree layer on the county GIS map. And by becoming involved in this initiative, the county of Halliburton will set an example and provide important leadership for the ATIP program with beneficial results for the county and its residents while fostering the beginning of an apple tree industry in Halliburton County. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from members of council? Councillor Ryle?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for your presentation. I really, I really appreciate what you're saying. I know that once upon a time, the people who are now growing garlic were basically at the same stage that you were a bunch of years ago. And now it's become, at minimum, a household revenue source where people are putting aside a certain amount and they're actually generating revenue from it. I'm not sure if we got any commercial, really commercial entities yet, but it's definitely there. And I think it sounds like what you're trying to do is basically a similar program to to allow that to happen. And and I can't disagree with what you're saying, and that the first step of this is promotion. Trying to get the word out there to to ensure that more people are aware of what we can do. And then also find out what species would would be best suited to growing up here. If you if you like, for instance, if you get down into words. Whitby in that particular area, the orchards are huge down there. Now, bear in mind, the city of Toronto has kind of taken some of it away. But but I think what you're doing is very good, so I I keep going.
Did you have a question, councillor Ryle?
Just a comment, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. In fact, I had a discussion. Am I able to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I I had a discussion with Debbie Barnhart at the Garlic Festival, and 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 yes, we were, we were actually talking books, as you had mentioned, so thank you very much.
So any other questions from council? So what I gather, you know, most importantly, from county council, that you're looking for assistance through a tourism department for promotion and some assistance with mapping, you know, other than the fact that, you know, identifying trees on on county property, those those would be your key priorities. Any questions or concerns about that? You have a resolution, maybe you could read us the resolution that you have there.
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the presentation from Luba Cargill regarding the Halliburton Apple Tree Identification Project, that staff be directed to prepare a letter of support for the project and identify locations of apple trees on county property, and finally, to create a layer on GIS that identifies apple tree locations.
Any questions or concerns about that, councillor Carter?
We're fine about the motion.
The Apple Blossom Tour.
So could I have a mover and a seconder for that resolution, councillors Carter and Fury? And we'll hear it again once Mr. Ritter has completed his writing.
So can I just read the?
Sure.
The additions. And that staff be directed to prepare a letter of support for the project and that and identify locations of apple trees on county property. And that they be directed to create a layer on GIS that identifies apple tree locations, and finally, that the tourism department be directed to support the Apple Blossom Tour with promotion.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. So our next delegation is from Watson and Associates. I think we have Jamie Cook, managing partner, and Catherine Jiao, analyst.
Hi, Catherine. You're muted.
Good morning. Can everyone see my screen?
We can see your screen. We cannot see you.
I'm just waiting for Jamie Cook to join. She'll be presenting.
Okay.
Catherine, Jamie was in the meeting, but he disappeared off the meeting. He took himself out of it. I'm not sure if he had some issue.
Um, I think it asks us to promote ourselves as panelists, and I'm not sure if it's just processing for him, that he will be presenting.
Yeah, it wasn't at that point yet.
Okay. I will just give him a message.
And is it possible to turn up your volume a little bit?
Catherine, can I ask you to just unshare your screen for a moment, please?
Sure.
Have have you heard from Jamie? We we're not getting anything from him, Catherine.
Um, I have not heard from him yet.
Okay, sure. So I think what we're going to do is to maybe move forward with Mr. Stone's planning report, and then we'll come back to you to you as a delegation, Catherine.
Okay, sounds good.
Few minutes to for Jamie to join us.
Okay.
Well, now I guess he's here.
Good morning, Mr. Cook.
Good morning.
So now, if you would like to go ahead with your with your presentation, that would be, we'll proceed.
Great, thank you. I'll just get Catherine to load up our our slides. And so, good morning, members of council. And and staff, my name is Jamie Cook, and I am a managing partner with Watson and Associates, and I'm here with Catherine Jiao. We're going to present the draft findings of the County of Halliburton two thousand twenty-three growth analysis study. This is essentially a conference review study that forms the background to the county's official plan, as well as the development charges background study. So if you could just go to slide one, Catherine. I just noted that this forecast is it's a long-term projection. We're going out to two thousand and fifty-one, and we're looking at long-term population of permanent and seasonal population and housing as well as employment. And then this will ultimately form the basis for further work for the county to look at urban land requirements, servicing needs, and long-term planning policy. And this is being done within the context of both the provincial policy direction and local policy. Next slide. So as part of this study, we have had significant discussions with a number of key stakeholder groups, starting with the county staff. We've also spoke with each of the local air musical staff, including many of us CAOs and planners as well as others, including clerks and building officials. We spoke to the Coretha and Halbert and Human Services Department, as well as realtors from the Halbert area. So this is all used to help bridge some of the information and fill some of the gaps in some of the data collection and just get a better sense of some of the key trends that are happening on the ground in Halliburton. As I mentioned, we're conducting this study within the context of both provincial and local policies. So right now, the the approved provincial policies are the provincial policy statements or statement that this is what we use to look at broader direction with respect to provincial planning in Ontario. As many of you know, this PPS has been proposed to be revised. This was proposed back in April of two thousand twenty-three. There's some significant changes that are coming out of this document that are going to have far-reaching impacts on urban planning and regional planning in Ontario. This document is still in draft form as well as Bill ninety-seven. Ultimately, we've we've looked at this this document, and we're considering the proposed policies, but ultimately the work that we're doing is still being prepared under the lens of the current PPS, but we have had regard to both of the the provincial policy documents. And then also, we're looking at the local planning framework within the County of Halliburton official plan as well as a local official plan. Next slide. So just wanted to spend one or a minute or so on the overall economic and demographic model that we use, and go to the next slide, Catherine. Just briefly, wanted to provide a bit of an overview of how this projection is carried out. So when we look at the long-term potential growth for a county like Halliburton, we're typically looking at the broader macroeconomic picture first to really get a sense of how the the broader economic trends ultimately and competitiveness and and growth rates of the the region ultimately affect the potential growth for both permanent and seasonal population in Halliburton. So we've done that, and I'm not going to get into all the details today because we simply don't have time, but we have taken deep dive, looking at the the regional economy and those macro trends with respect to growth domestic product provincial level and focusing in on labor force trends within the economic region. And then ultimately, understanding broader trends for employment within the labor labor force commuter shed. And then ultimately, that information really helps us understand what are some of the driving factors that are anticipated to influence growth in in economics and and employment over the the long term, and how does that impact net migration trends going forward, and net migration being a key driver of population growth. And once we have that information, from there, we've prepared a population forecast by by age. So we looked at major age cohorts, and then that analysis is then used to ultimately derive a population forecast by age. We also consider trends in natural increase. So how many additional births and less deaths are you adding to the the county every year on a net basis, and how does that impact the natural growth of the county? And obviously, this is a key consideration when we look at the aging of the population for Halliburton. From there, we prepare a housing forecast by structure type, so looking at different density forms. And then we've allocated the the growth by each of the local municipalities and urban settlement areas and remaining rural areas. Next slide. So just to jump into some of the key trends with respect to population, first, we can take a look here at the historical population growth for Halliburton over the last twenty years, and you can see that for most of this time period, we have fairly moderate population growth levels, but in the last five years, you can see a significant uptick in the overall population growth. We grew at a rate of just under three percent with an overall growth rate over the twenty-year period of one point five percent. So a three percent growth rate is a very significant growth rate. It's about double the provincial average over that five-year period. But what I want to really point out here is a lot of this population growth in that five-year period came from not necessarily all new housing development. Some of it was driven by new new housing and immigration of new residents to the county, but a lot of this growth did come from the conversion of existing seasonal units that are owned by residents that live outside of the county who ultimately converted those units to a permanent occupancy. A lot of that drive for that trend was accelerated during the the pandemic. We have seen conversions over a longer-term period, but it was accelerated over that five-year period into the the COVID pandemic, and I got to be speaking about this throughout the presentation, how it's impacting growth. Next slide. So this helps to kind of paint that picture a little bit in terms of what's really driving growth from a a permanent and new development perspective versus conversions, and this looks at building permanent activity net of demolitions. This is all building permits over the last about fifteen years or more. And what you can see here is that actually, building activities have been pretty steady over the last fifteen years. We actually dropped a little bit from the the first five-year period, but we've been averaging somewhere around that a hundred to a hundred and twenty, you know, units a year on average in those five-year periods. And we're expecting that building from activities can stay fairly consistent with that long-term average over the forecast. So that's the first thing to really note when we're looking at how we're growing. The next slide here looks at, well, where are where are people coming from and how is this influencing the way we grow and where is the where is the demand coming from? So this looks at net migration trends by type of migration. So there's really three types of migration. There's international migration. There's interprovincial migration. So this is migration from other parts of Canada into Halliburton, and then there's intra-provincial migration. So this is migration from other parts of Ontario to Halliburton, and you can see here that the vast majority of migration to Hallburtons historically always been intra-provincial migration, so other parts of Ontario migrating to to Halliburton. And you can see in the last five years, it's it increased significantly. And again, a lot of that was driven by the pandemic and drive for or influence of conversions to to permanent occupancy. You can see that international migration and interprovincial migration is either minimal or negative and has remained that way over the last twenty years. But we are seeing significant interprovincial migration, and the table over to the the right shows where those where that net migration is coming from, and you can see that the majority of it is coming from the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So most of this is central Ontario, about eighty-one percent of total net migration is coming from from this area, and this is a trend that we would expect to continue but moderate over time due to the moderation of conversions over the long term. Next slide. So we also took a look at other forecasts that are out there, and there really is only one other comprehensive set of growth forecasts that are prepared, and that's to the Ministry of Finance. And every year, the Ministry of Finance in Ontario prepares a set of projections for Halliburton. And you can see here, we look back all the way back to two thousand seventeen, and it's interesting to see that the population growth rate has been increasing pretty steadily. Every year, when the Ministry of Finance updates their forecasts, they they continue to increase the the growth rate for Halliburton, and this is a trend that we're seeing not only in Halliburton but across Ontario as a whole. It has been increasing fairly steadily, I would say, in Halliburton relative to that provincial average. It has been increasing fairly steadily, I would say, in Halliburton relative to that provincial average. The growth rate for the province has now increased to about 1.5%. So when you look at Halliburton, the Ministry of Finance's projections are still somewhat lower than the overall growth rate for. Relative to the provincial average. We've taken a look at this and we think that they're getting more reasonable, but I think there's still. I think some potential omission of the impact of seasonal conversions to permanent that that's having on the overall long-term population growth. So we are, as you'll see in our slides, still projecting a slightly higher rate of growth over the long term relative to the Ministry of Finance. Next slide. So the first thing we looked at was the long-term employment forecast. We did, we prepared three scenarios for long-term employment growth. The reference forecast has the county growing in employment from about just under 7,000 in 2021. To about 10,000 in 2051. That's an increase of about just over 3,000 jobs. And then the range of employment under the low to the high is about 2,300 jobs to about 3,800 jobs. So that represents a growth rate of between 1% or 1.6% annually. And you can, you can see that the overall rate of growth is starting to bend a little bit downward over the long term. And this is really an impact of the aging of the labor force. It does have downward pressure on the rate of both employment growth and population growth. As the labor force ages over the long term. In the next slide, just provided a little more details here on the ratio of jobs to population or the activity rate against the total employment. So one of the things to be mindful of is that, again, the labor force is aging. And that puts downward pressure on employment growth. And because it puts downward pressure on that ratio of total jobs to populations. Given the amount of working people in the labor force relative to the total population. So you can see then the, the orange line, that the, the activity rate has been dropping. Fairly, fairly steadily since 2006 from about 39% to about 33%. And we do expect it to moderately drop a little further to 32% by 2051. With respect to the types of jobs, sorry, we just go back one second there, just with respect to the types of jobs. I just wanted to note that a lot of the jobs that we're identifying are in what we would call population-related categories. So this is commercial, retail, institutional type employment. About two-thirds of the jobs are in that category. We've also identified fairly significant growth in work-at-home employment. This is obviously something that was accelerated during the COVID pandemic and we looked at this in detail to really understand the true work-at-home. Jobs as opposed to hybrid workers. And we are anticipating this to increase over the long term. As continued provincial investments are being made of broadband infrastructure as well as other internet services. That are provided in the rural areas such as Starlink Internet Service. So these are factors that we do anticipate to continue to drive the ability to work at home or work hybridly. Next slide, please. So we're going to get into the population projections now and then follow that with housing. So as I mentioned, we prepared three long-term population scenarios for the county. They range in overall growth of about 1% annually to 1.5% annually. The reference forecast here is projecting an increase of about 10,000 people in the permanent population. From 2021 to 2031. We do recommend going forward with the medium forecast or the reference scenario. As the most likely or preferred forecast to work with for long-term planning purposes. We do think this forecast properly contextualizes the growth potential for Halliburton. Within the context of the surrounding regional economy. We also think that it accurately identifies the impacts of continued conversions of seasonal residents to permanent. And it also reflects our review of local population and housing trends within the county. And how that is anticipated to influence growth. Next slide. So this slide here provides a summary of the overall net migration trends within Halliburton. Looking historically on the left to 2021 and then over the forecast period. And you can see here that there's a significant amount of net migration that's identified in the dark blue. We've been anticipated about 1,800 additional new migrants. Or net migration from largely other places in Ontario over the next 25 years. That's about a 30% increase to what we've been averaging over the last five years, including the big jump that we saw there in 2016 to 21. So it's a significant amount of net migration to accommodate this forecast. We think it's an appropriate level of growth, but the, under the high scenario, we would need significantly more migration. And for those reasons, we're not recommending that forecast as the recommended scenario to move forward with. Also wanted to point out here in the light blue, this is the natural increase, which is actually a natural decrease. So what we're seeing here is a situation where you have an aging population, which is really driving a natural decline in population. With more deaths occurring on an annual basis than births. And this is something that will continue to increase over the long term as the county's population ages. So it puts more upward pressure on net migration as a source of growth to maintain even the same level of population growth moving forward. And the next slide really provides a bit more details on this aging of the population. And so we've looked at this in detail by looking at trends in net migration by age. And what this graph shows is it shows the average age of residents in Halliburton over the next 30 years by major age cohort. And you can see, one of the most notable aspects of this figure is that in the gray bars or the great component of the bars. You can see the 75-plus age group, which is the older component of the seniors population. It is increasing quite significantly from about in 2006, about 10% of the population. To 16, or sorry, 14% in 2021 and then doubling from that to 28% by 2051. And this is happening with some adjustments that we are already seeing or trends to the positive on net migration. We've typically seen about 55% of the net migration being in the 55-plus category. And we are seeing that change to about roughly about 45%. So we're seeing a bit more influence of families and younger adults, younger adults and children in the migration. But it's still not enough to really augment this aging of the population going forward. And something obviously to be very mindful of because it has a significant impact on population growth, on servicing needs. And other municipal infrastructure and services and obviously housing. So this is, I think, a big, a big finding and not surprising. But something to be very, very mindful of when going forward. Next slide. So from here, we've prepared a total forecast of housing. Over the long term, we're projecting about 170 households a year. We are projecting the demand to moderate, just sort of, just softly moderate over the long-term period. This is again, as a result of the aging of the population, anticipate slowing of growth rates, not only in Halliburton. But in the broader economic region and across Ontario over the long term. And we also are expecting that that rate of growth will take a, will moderate. From this spike that we saw there in 2016 to 21. Again, a lot of that spike in additional housing that we added. In the census was really a result of conversions and I'm going to get to that in a bit more detail in a few minutes. Also, just wanted to point out the mix of housing. You still are very much dominated by low-density housing forms, but we do anticipate to see a slight shift towards some more. Medium and high-density housing forms. Obviously, those would be concentrated in the urban settlements of the county. Next slide. So now we're going to get into a bit more of a discussion on the, not only the permanent, but also looking at the seasonal population and the conversions. And so you can see here, this is based on data that we've compiled, looking at impact data and statistics candidate data. And also looking at your building permit data, we've determined that about, over the forecast, about 30%. Of new development activity that's added to the permanent housing stock is still going to be made up of conversions. And about 70% from new development for permanent occupancy. You can see that that never really spiked in 2016 to 21 to about 61% of total, the total units added to the permanent stock. So when census looks at the housing in 2021, they just look at, well, how much have you grown from 2016 to 21? And if you have an increase of residents that are now living in a unit permanently from previous years. That were there seasonally, they now get added to the permanent housing base and the permanent population. So that's a big part of what's been happening is, as you probably already know, with respect to the housing and growth rates that are being reported by StatsCan. So we are projecting that to moderate over time. We do think that looking at the supply of units to for conversion. And also considering the demographic trends of baby boomers aging and their desire to convert and live all year round in Halliburton. As well as other generations following the boomers, including the Gen X and millennial generation. We do anticipate there to be less opportunity for conversions over the long term. And there'll be some pressure to convert back as aging baby boomers decide that they no longer want to live at the cottage. On a full-time basis as they get into their more senior years. So we are anticipating to still exceed conversions, but that's a moderate over time. The next slide shows the net impact of this conversion issue with respect to how, how does it affect new seasonal growth over time? So while we are expecting to see new seasonal growth over time, there's still a significant amount of units being converted from seasonal to permanent. Which actually results in a net loss over the long-term period, a very minor net loss of about four or so units a year on average. You can see that in the, the orange at the bottom of this graph. So there is still seasonal activity, but we don't expect the seasonal, net seasonal numbers to grow. Which means that your seasonal housing base and population base is not expected to increase over the long term because of this trend. Next slide. So this, this slide here just provides a forecast just for reference, looking at the total population. In, sorry, sorry, this is the total housing stock for both permanent and seasonal. So just looking forward here, you can see we're expected to increase from about 20, just under 22,000 units in 2021. To a total of just under 27,000 units in 51 when we add both permanent and seasonal together. So we're going to switch gears now just for a few minutes on the allocations. And just briefly, because we don't have enough time to get into all the details. I wanted to say a few words about the allocations of growth by area municipality. One of the first observations that we've made is that we think in most cases, the permanent, annual permanent population growth rate. Is anticipated to drop a little bit relative to historical averages for, for most municipalities except for Dicert. So we're fairly close to being in line with long-term averages. As you can see, Algonquin Highlands has been averaging around 27 permanent units a year. And we're anticipating to drop to about 21. Highlands East averaged 34 units a year. We're expected to drop to about 30. And Dicert, as I mentioned, an average of 66 is expected to increase to about 70 units a year. Given some of the potential there for a range of urban developments within Halliburton. As well as additional development in the rural area. And then Minden Hills is expected to average about 50 units a year, which is also a slight decrease from the historical average. On the next slide, you can see a fairly similar trend in population. Again, most of the municipalities experiencing a, either a similar trend. Sorry, I actually would say that the annual permanent population is a little bit, little bit stronger relative to historical trends. But forming a similar pattern with Dicert being strongest, also seeing Minden Hills. With quite a bit of a potential increase in permanent population. And again, this is also being driven by not only the growth in new units. But also the conversions from seasonal to permanent. And so to summarize, the trends between urban and rural. This slide here just shows what's been happening historically and what we're anticipating to occur with respect to the allocation of growth by urban and rural area. So over the last five years, we've, we've seen about 25% of the development activity occurring in the urban settlement areas. And about 75% occurring in the rural settlement areas. We do expect that to shift a little bit further to urban, given some of the potentials that we're seeing, again, largely in Dicert and to lesser extent in Minden Hills. So we are expecting a slight shift to about 33% urban and about 67% rural. But again, the majority of the development being in the rural category. So what this means that over time, we are expected to see a slight shift towards more urban development. Within the county over the long term from about, by, in 2016, we were at about 70% rural. By 2051, we're at about 65% rural. But it's also important to keep in mind that the, the amount of actual housing growth is still anticipated to be quite steady in the rural area going forward. And we would anticipate that that's going to continue to be driven by market demand, changing provincial policies. And also improvements to telecommunications infrastructure to continue to drive that. So in the next slide, I just wanted to summarize the overall population for each of the four municipalities. And how that distribution of population is expected to change. And essentially, we're anticipating a fairly steady pattern in terms of population by area municipality. Right now in 2021, Dicert makes up the majority of the population at 35%, mostly followed by Minden Hills at 34%. And then Highlands East at 19% and Algonquin Highlands at 12%. And so looking forward, we do expect Dicert's share to increase slightly to 37%. And as a result, we do expect to see some slight drops in the share of, of population in the other municipalities. But every municipality is expected to see fairly steady growth going forward. And then this last slide just shows this relationship between, or sorry, the seasonal population. Again, just to put this into perspective, the seasonal population base is quite significant in Halliburton. At about 43,400 seasonal residents at the peak summer seasons. It's expected to drop modestly over the forecast, again, because of this influence of conversions. So we don't expect to see major changes in the seasonal population base. But it is putting continued upward pressure on that permanent growth over time. So in conclusion, just start to start, wanted to just mention a few things on the broader regional trends. So we have seen overall fairly, fairly strong recovery in labor force growth across the economic region, including Halliburton. As we recovered through the impacts of COVID-19. As a result, we are seeing fairly significant labor shortages and they're very acute as you would all be aware in Halliburton. So this is obviously a key aspect of looking forward to make, ensure that we. Are providing an appropriate and adequate amount of housing opportunities to accommodate labor. Both in the rental and ownership market. It's a key, it's a key aspect where the municipalities have some control over this trend in labor. And they, they do go hand in hand in terms of providing housing and ultimately providing labor. We are experiencing strong federal immigration rates across Ontario and the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And this is also going to continue to put population pressure as the populations continue to grow in these larger urban centers. And it's also as we see further out, we're growth pressure, both in working age families as well as empty nesters and retirees. The regional economy is quite heavily, sorry, just to go back to that last slide. The regional economy is quite heavily concentrated in the service sector economy. But we do also see some potential in small-scale manufacturing, construction and utilities. And this is something we do expect to see some moderate growth in the forecast. I mentioned work at home and hybrid being a key driver of employment growth over the long term. And as a result of some of these trends, we are expecting to see an increase of just over about 3,000 jobs in Halliburton over the long term. Next slide. So with respect to the demographics, we're projecting a permanent increase of about 10,000 residents permanently across the county. Over the next three decades. We uh we are, as I mentioned, identifying a significant increase in the seventy-five-plus population. And this population is going to, it's going to age regardless of whether we achieve these net migration levels or not, because most of this um. Growth in the seventy-five-plus population is really coming from, a lot of it is coming from the. The uh existing uh population aging. We tend to see the migration levels drop off quite considerably in the seventy-five-plus category. So a lot of this is just. Purely driven by the demographics of a large baby boom cohort that is uh aging, largely aging in place. We're projecting about a hundred and seventy units a year to accommodate this growth, and about one-third of that development is anticipated to be as a result of. Uh, conversions. So again, they're not all necessarily um new in terms of new construction, but they're new in terms of uh they're adding um, they're adding. To the the permanent population growth. Uh, so something to be mindful of and something that we have um articulated quite um uh in quite a bit of detail in our reporting. We are projecting that the county will still add seasonal housing of about sixteen hundred households, um but. Because of those conversions, we're actually expecting the seasonal housing base to drop by about a hundred and thirty units over the next three decades. Next slide. Um, so as um, just in summary on the area municipal projections, we are um, as I mentioned, anticipating a slight shift. Um, towards um uh urban development, and most of this trend is are is mostly pronounced in the Dicer area where there's more potential for. Uh, some urban developments, particularly in the uh Halliburton settlement area. Um. We are expecting to see a a moderate uh decline in in seasonal conversions, but we are expecting that to continue over the forecast. And all of the uh area municipalities are expected to see uh population housing growth um in their respective um municipalities. Um, either at a similar uh for 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 per- for permanent population, either at a similar rate or a a slightly higher rate compared to historical levels. So that concludes my presentation. Now, there's a lot of material there, and I went through that pretty quickly, um but happy to uh take any questions. Uh, in terms of next steps. We are uh aiming to finalize our projection work um over the next um several months. We um. We're looking for any final feedback um on this work because uh obviously this is an important. Foundational uh piece of work to the development charges study. So we want to make sure we've got the the numbers right and we're comfortable with it moving forward. And then ultimately, um, we want to be able to finalize that um for the DC and then move on to reporting in October and. Uh, finalizing this work in uh in November. So happy to take any questions now at this time.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, you've obviously done a very deep dive on our population numbers and and showed us some challenges going forward, that's for sure. Um, I would look to council for questions and or comments, Council Ferie.
Well, and we all know the last two years, the prices in the cities are extremely high, way above market value, and they're starting to slip down. So if if the economists are right, and we're going to have a turn down in the economy here in the next two years, I hope they're not, but I think they are. Uh, how will that affect these population trends?
Yeah, it's a really good uh question. It's something we've been monitoring uh on a pretty much weekly basis. Um, so I would say that I I think personally and professionally, I think that we are going to be in for uh some, I think. Uh, challenging times over the next year to eighteen months. I think we're going to see some pain as a result of the. Significant interest rates that we've seen over the last year. We've been through the most significant rate tightening cycle in the last forty years. And it is going to have a lag effect, I think. Um. I think, but what I think is potentially uh a result of this is that, given the amount of stimulus um and um. The monetary um um um. Adjustments ever made uh through COVID, through lowering of rates and uh quantitative easing and basically that the printing of money, as you will, it's it's created a, it's created a significant amount of. Um, velocity of money, and it has also created a significant amount of volatility. And so I think that. It's really hard to try to project where these um. Contractions and expansions are going to occur, but I think one theory I have is that we're, there's a good chance we're going to. Be looking at a s- a period of uns- instability and volatility over the next decade or so. I think that. There's a potential for this impact of the rate um tightening to have a lag effect and catch up to. Um, the economy and the central banks having to react both here and south of the border. That could also then um create, you know, further market demand and and um generate um. You know, uh, an impact of uh. Uh, further inflationary impacts as a result of that. So there, I think we're going to be in for a bit of a rocky period over the next few years, but the longer-term trends structurally in the economy. Um, and demographically still look very solid. We are experiencing. Significant uh immigration. Uh, the targets are very high, and we are exceeding those targets um and have been um over the last couple of years. And it's it's anticipated that we're going to continue to stay strong uh with respect to national and provincial population growth. When you look at how we're tracking compared to any of the other G seven countries, we're tracking it with double the rate of any other G seven country. And there's a lot of reasons going, uh, that go you go into that. A lot of it has to do with our. Our our growing economy. It has to do with um quality of life and transparency of government and. Other uh factors that make Canada and Ontario a a positive place to live. We're seeing some reshoring of manufacturing for the first time. And some of that is being driven by um federal stimulus and um. That's a whole other debate, but um that's also creating quite a bit of growth in that sector and spin-off opportunities. And so um what that's doing is it's, you know, it's creating uh further growth in the large urban areas and continuing to add that outward growth pressure to. Halliburton. And also what I'm seeing is in the the broader region of. Of Halliburton and and further to the south into, you know, uh places into uh Simcoe County and um Ortha. We're seeing, you know, a strengthening regional economy in those areas as well, which is also. Bodes well for those who are working and and commuting and working locally in Halliburton, uh particularly those in those working uh categories. So. The long uh uh, the short answer to this long response is that I think um, I think that we're going to uh. Have a, you know, a bit of a a tough time over the next uh year or two, but the long-term trends, I think, are still very positive, and the trajectory for growth is. Has increased, and I think it's it's going to stay that way.
You had a follow-up?
Yeah, that that was a good answer. By the way, you did a good study. Uh, I'd just like to point out that a lot of the people that moved up here sold their homes in Toronto for probably. Six or seven hundred thousand more than they did, or should have. And then they come up here and they could buy a nice cottage and or build a nice cottage, and that's why a lot of the conversions happened. And I, and you know, even people went out to the East Coast. Because it was a lot more. So I think it's it's a kind of a moving target, but anyway, you did some good work there and we'll certainly pay attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sheldon, Counselor Rayo.
Um, so I'm not really sure if there's an answer to the dilemma, but businesses across Halliburton County are already struggling to fill job postings now, and if in twenty fifty-one. The average or the, there's twenty-eight percent of the population is over seventy-five years of age. I'm not sure how this county could even remain sustainable in providing the needs of that demographic. So I don't know if that's a question or just a comment, or. If there's something at the county level that we can, we can do to to assist or help in some way, but that's, that's a frightening number to me. When there's already not people to, you know, work at Tim Hortons or Subway and, you know, younger, younger people.
Um, Counselor Rayo.
Yeah, first off, thank you very much. It's it's an in-depth and eye-opener, and and I totally agree with what you're saying. The next couple of years are going to be a little rough. Whether they straighten out or not, that's a different argument. But if 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 we had to look at three things and only look at three things as a top priority over those two to three years that are going to become an issue. In your mind, what would be the things that Halliburton County, especially Halliburton County Council, should be concentrating on or. As as part of their top three items that they should look at?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so. I think a lot of this, so. We've, I I gave a long answer to that first question about the macro trends, and a lot of that is um really out of the. Control of the county. You only have so much control of these macro influences, but where you do have more control is with housing. And so, and again, you have to obviously, it's a um a partnership effort with the development community, but I think a lot of it really comes back to housing and it comes back to servicing and and land. And so. We're, 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 uh, for the work that we're doing, we're, we're seeing that there is um. Currently, there's. In in most cases, there's not a a huge amount of certainty with respect to the. Ability for uh future housing beyond um the next few years. We have, you know, we've looked at the development pipeline and approved applications. But uh everywhere we look, there was, there was, there was, you know, uncertainty around um the developability of the of of vacant lands with respect to uh, you know, environmental uh issues or. Uh, flood, uh floodplain issues. Uh, we don't really have a good handle on the the long-term um supply of of housing to accommodate. Um, or land to accommodate housing over the long term, and I think that's critical. And also. Uh, there, there's not a a precise uh understanding of the servicing um capacity either, something that I think um. My colleague Peter is going to be working further with the the county to better understand that, but. Right now, we're identifying where we see demand to drive the need for servicing, but there clearly has to be a. A more um in-depth look to understand what the servicing capacity is and when those um. Uh, thresholds for increasing capacity are going to be needed. And then um, the last thing I would just say, there's really a need for uh back to housing um. To ensure that you have a broad range of housing opportunities. By by price point, which uh um in the ownership market, which means that we need, you know, a. Greater variety of housing, not just single detached housing units. Um, and we need, we need rental housing and affordable housing. And so this study is not going to get into all the uh the details of the implementation of that housing strategy, but it does definitely does set the counting up well to then. Work with your housing providers and your housing authority, uh including Porta Lakes. To really uh better understand that. And I I I have been speaking with the housing authority and there may be some further work that we can do, but um. Clearly, there is um, there's a significant uh challenge that ahead on that and. Um, and that also goes with, you know, the aging of the population that you're going to need other forms of housing to accommodate that that um. That seniors population age group as well.
Counselor Carter.
So thanks for the presentation, obviously. Um, when you start to uh acquire and then coalesce all these numbers. Um, you know, you get the graphs and then you you try to look at them and and make sure that they uh they make some sense. Uh, there's three things that I would challenge you on. Um, one. Um, you've got the seasonal population of Minden dropping ten percent, um and I don't really see that happening. Um, the second thing is that you've got us growing, uh and you've chosen, I think, the one point three percent. Uh, which is less than the provincial average. I think that if your other um hypotheses are correct. And as Counselor Ferry uh brought to mind, if there is immigration and growth in the in. That tends to go towards the larger centers. And those larger centers then have a challenge with housing. Um, and the price of housing, you know, goes up because there's more demand. And you, when you've got those people who have a house in the, in Toronto. Um, or the Golden Horseshoe, or however you you put it, and then have a place up here. It makes an awful lot of sense for them to dump one very expensive house and 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 come together in 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 one location. That's what has been happening to us over the last five to ten years. And and, you know, basically, all your economic trends are suggesting that that. Is going to continue to happen in the large cities. So, you know, the the consequence of that is chances are it's going to continue to happen here. So I I don't see us growing at less than the provincial average, and I think that's an important, important thing. Um, and then the third point is something that, you know, that Counselor Shell was just talking about. In your breakdown of the ages, you correctly have the population that is going to be over seventy-five growing. But if you take that whole graph. And you look at, say, the older populations and the younger population, you've got the older population aging. And you don't have the younger population growing into that, into that top eight, more aged category. You know, it remains at that forty to forty-two percent range in those younger categories. Since we don't have a very high birth rate. Uh, and most of the people that are immigrating to here are are people who have retired. Um, you know, there, there doesn't seem to be a, if you will, a natural feeding of that of that lower group. So I don't see how those. Numbers can can uh remain the same. But I think the my last comments are really um. For this group, but it's really what Counselor Shell just said. Is that, and we talked about this a little bit yesterday in the community safety and well-being, is that. We do have this population aging. Uh, we don't have the people. Who are there to support it and, and, you know. Back to the example of, in the last ten years, we've almost had a, you know, a forty percent decrease in the number of doctors. Uh, you know, we've had a a situation where, you know, nurses are, there's a shortage of nurses, there's a shortage. Of everybody to take care of that population, and I think it behooves us in county council. To make this part of our strategic plan. If this is what it's going to look like in terms of the demographic. Today, we do not have the structure and the facilities to be able to support that. We, you know, we're, we're, we almost don't have the the ability to support what we have today, and we're all getting older. So, you know, we really need to be concentrating our efforts on on looking at it as to how we handle that.
Well, and strategic planning is something that we've identified. Do we need to probably start working on the beginning of next year and 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 obviously, this is. The sort of thing that we need to be looking at and looking at what we can do about it. Um, did you have any response to uh to Counselor Carter's challenge of your numbers, Mr. Cook?
Uh, yeah, I think, I mean, good observations. Um, I guess the first comment on the Menden seasonal population dropping, it, again, I just want to be um. Just to reiterate that it's not, it it's not that we're saying that you're not going to see steady seasonal population growth in Minden. Uh, Hills, it's just that there's still a significant amount of conversions that we expect to continue, uh which. Have a um basically countering effect on that growth. And so. This, the conversions and the seasonal growth are are fairly close in our analysis, but there's still slightly more conversions happening than um than seasonal. So. That's what's happening there. It's it's, it's, I'll be honest, it's very hard to, you know, nail down these conversions. We were looking at this in Halliburton, looking at it in Muskoka and other, um, we've looked at it in other um areas of cottage country across across Ontario. I think demographically, I do see a trend that will slow down because there's a significant bulge of the baby boom populations entering under seventy-five plus years. And I think that the propensity for conversions is going to diminish uh as those boomers get older. Uh, there's, uh, of course, there'll continue to be conversions from other generations, but there's just not as many of those people in those generations, particularly the the Generation X following the boomers. So that's one aspect. And there's also the the potential of just the supply to convert as well over um the the next thirty years. So. That's really what's happening on the 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 seasonal population. Uh. I I I take your point about uh higher growth. It's it's, it's, again, we're looking at thirty years, so very challenging to accurately project population growth. Uh, particularly in an environment where we've just been through a pandemic. Uh, and we saw that big spike in in population, but I think that that spike is an anomaly. I don't think you're going to continue to see a spike at that level. Um, but I do expect that you're going to see uh a stronger rate of uh immigration, as I pointed out. Um, about a thirty percent increase over the average because of these um drivers that um uh that we've been talking about. Uh, again, largely from these larger uh urban centers. I also think that the population forecast for the province is starting to get a little carried away. The uh, I don't really know. I, I'll be honest, it's hard to understand exactly what's going on with the Ministry of Finance these days. They used to be very conservative in their projections. I have a, uh, I I I. I don't know for sure how how that's changed, uh, you know, politically. I can, I can only imagine. Uh, the pressure that they're they're getting to increase their population forecast to match the political messaging out there on the one point five million homes and other incentives for more housing. Um, but I think there's a limit to how fast this population in this province is going to grow. Um, there's only so much labor to ultimately construct, plan, service, market um and sell homes. So something to consider over the. So something to consider over the, you know, the long-term period. If we do tend to see a stronger pace of growth, I think it's important, you know, to monitor that. And you have three scenarios. So the high scenario could also ultimately be a scenario that you want to continue to have a look at. And, and maybe even use for certain studies, but I would recommend the, the reference scenario or the medium zero going forward. I, I'm a bit hesitant to continue to overestimate growth over the long term. There's a recency bias that we tend to have when we look at projections, when we have negative trends from an, an economic downturn, we tend to project that negative trend over the long term. And that's the opposite. We have a positive trend. It's, it's very hard to, to try to project inflection points or changes in a trend. So it's just important not to overstate something that's, that's happened in the last five years. But I do want to, again, reiterate that I do think that the long-term growth rate from a structural standpoint is, is going to be stronger. And, and that's the main reason why. And I, I've looked at this from a, a longer-term historical period, not just through COVID. And that analysis with, you know, looking at that with our team has resulted in our, our trends and projections. On the age structure, I'll, I can take a look. We've, we've developed a, you know, a detailed model. It's a core survival model. It looks at the age structure moving forward and ages the population on an annual basis. And it adds migration in and out and looks at change, changing trends in verse and death. So I, I, I can't imagine that there's, we would have to make significant changes in the overall rate of migration to ultimately change that age structure. It's really not going to change that much, even with a, even with some big changes in, in our projections by migration by age. And I don't, I don't expect that we would see a more significant swing in that migration than that we've, than, than we've projected. But I'm, I'm happy to take a look and just see if there's anything that looks sort of funny on, on that front.
Councillor Carter.
Just on the, on the growth, yes, everybody likes to do hockey stick type projections. And I, and I understand, and I guess what I'm trying to say is that, yes, we, our situation in the last 10 years has been, you know, a larger than expected growth. And then the previous five years, it's, it's greater than, you know, five years before that. I guess all I'm trying to say is in the next short term, we probably have that larger growth. Overall, average may be fine, but I guess the thing is, is that if we continue to have the larger than expected, and, and I, and you projected here that 1.3%, you know, starting, you know, next year. If we still have the larger growth, we have to be able to prepare for that. You know, we have to have the infrastructure. We have to have the things to be able to support that. And so I, you know, I, I don't want us to be looking at it from, you know, using the opposite view of that hockey stick approach where we have an average that's going to get us somewhere in 30 years. And, and, but we end up being behind the curve for 15 of those. So, you know, I want to make sure that we have the infrastructure to be able to su- support that. And, and, and just one last comment, maybe the aging. Is that, yes, the migration situation probably isn't going to change the numbers, but the calendar is. And, you know, that's where the, you know, the people graduate into those higher categories of age. I, I, I know that every October, so.
Thank you. Councillor Rayo.
Yeah, first off, excellent presentation. My, my general consensus is that when you look at the statistics that you're generating, the, the most effective numbers of the two-year, the five-year and the 10-year, anything after that, all due respect, is pure speculation. And another indicator that we use that you probably haven't considered is waste management. We're producing tons more garbage than we ever produced before. Somebody's generating it. And it's coming on a regular basis. So as things go up and down, so does the waste that, that's being generated by it. So I realize you can't calculate that statistic, but it's something that lets us believe that, that, that there could be some stability in what we're doing and, and how to go ahead, especially when you're talking about the things that we call service delivery review is going to be a key factor going down the road. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. I, I guess at this point in time, it's, you know, I'd be looking for a mover in a second or to receive the report, you know, recognizing that it is a challenging and a bit of a moving target to, to come up with accurate numbers on the long term. And we do look forward to the continued work that you're going to be doing on the development charges study. Could I have a mover in a second or to receive the report then? Councillors Rayo and Fury.
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor Ferry, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the presentation from Watson and Associates regarding the 2023 Comprehensive Review Study Draft Countywide Growth Analysis and allocations.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will take a brief 10-minute break. Welcome back. Next on the agenda is the, are the planning reports. So first is your, your report on the growth projection study.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So this information report really is to piggyback on the presentation you just received. The more critical part of the study is finalizing the growth projections. So you saw the next steps in the slides. And so that's what we're hoping to do over the next month and a half or so is to finalize those. We have solicited comments from the area planners and the CEO. So hopefully there'll be some comments re- received from the four municipalities. But we wanted to make sure that council was very aware of how the study had been progressing and what were some of the projections that we were seeing. So thank you. I can certainly ask, answer any questions with regards to how we'll proceed.
Any questions for Mr. Stone? So we've actually passed the resolution to receive the report. Do we have any regulation?
I, I do, yeah.
Sorry? Go ahead.
Steven, in the program that you're going to be doing, as I said, I'm very concerned about the two, the five and the 10, and beyond that is kind of more speculation than anything else. In your next steps, is that, is that where the main focus is going to be on what we can accomplish within our term and, and, and within the subsequent term coming up?
Yeah. So thank you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council. So the, the one question that you raised with regards to the three priorities, certainly when we look at, you know, the growth projections, how that might relate to finalizing the development charges study. But it also will impact how we look at updating our official plan at some point in the future. And a big part of that will be what I call rationalization of our settlement boundaries. It'll be, we'll work very closely with the four municipalities to really look at opportunities to, you know, enhance what our settlement look, areas look like. And to really identify what I'm going to say, say is shovel-ready lands that may be just outside of the settlement areas. And we can use the growth projections and the development charges study to actually bring those shovel-ready area properties in. And then encourage, you know, partnerships within the community to see those lands go from shovel-ready to draft approval to zoned. And then to building permits for that. So that's what I see. Being, as you pointed, the two, the five, the 10-year process, that will certainly come part and parcel with the development charges study. But then more, more importantly, a settlementary rationalization that will do with the official plan.
Any other questions on Steve's report? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive this report? Councillors Carter and Fury. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Ferry, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the September 13th, 2023 Planning Report, PLN-52-2023 entitled Growth Projection Study Update.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is your planning department general update for September.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So again, on the note of being excited, the Official Plan Amendment Two for DICEART, which is a multi-unit residential in downtown Halliburton. That's gone through its appeal period with no appeals being lodged. So we're able to finalize that approval and give the green light to DICEART staff to go ahead with the next steps in that process. So that's exciting. We've circulated the multiple or additional residential unit official plan amendment for the county's official plan. And hopefully by the end of this month, the comment window will be done and we'll be able to present that at a public meeting, first, first council meeting in October. And not anticipating any issues with that one, we could actually have that amendment in place and approved by the first meeting of county council in November, which is extremely exciting. So stay tuned.
Really exciting to see some things moving forward, finding.
The other thing too, Andrea just noted that we got our first payment installment for the floodplain mapping project that we've been working on this year. So that's, that's incredible in itself because the previous project, they, they, they still owe us for a couple of years back. So this new program's been really efficient. So we're excited about that. All the field work has been done on the floodplain mapping. And so we'll have another technical meeting later, later in October, just to present our findings. And now then we're going to be able to see some materials arise out of that. The actual floodplain mapping will be produced in draft plan and be examined by the partner agencies, the federal government, provincial government. And then from there, we'll proceed to public information sessions, I'm hoping before Christmas. So that's an exciting development that's happening. So in terms of shoreline preservation bylaw, so we'll be presenting to council next month, just sort of a snapshot of what successes that we've had over the course of the summer. And see, beyond, beyond that, there's nothing really to be more excited about than what I've said. So thank you very much.
Well, it's good to see the level of excitement that we've heard. Any questions on the planning report, councillor Carter?
So what, what kind of timing do you think you'll have on our, on the official plan? You know, when would it, because we're sort of holding up hours based on when you're going to be done so that we can then submit to you based on your, your newest plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to, uh, Warden to the rest of council. So if all things go as planned, our policies will be in place in November, which means you can submit right after that.
Any other questions on the planning report? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Councillors Carter and McKecney.
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor McKecney, be resolved that Halliburton County Council received the planning report, PLN-50-2023 entitled Planning Department Update for September 2023 as information.
All in favor? That's carried. Finally, a, an update on the short-term rental.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So we've had the opportunity to meet with our municipal colleagues to spend more or less, I guess it was a morning or afternoon to look at the, the draft bylaw as, as considered by county council. And we received input from, from our municipal colleagues and they suggested a couple of changes, which are reflected in yellow in the draft that I've attached to my report. Principally, they deal with the use of sleeping cabins. I know that's been hotly discussed with county council. And it was observed by a, a couple of the area planners that, that, that would conflict with their zoning bylaw. So that was their suggestion to not allow for sleeping cabins to be rented out as part of a, a short-term rental. So that was a suggested change. And the other part that was raised was the, the use of short-term rentals when it comes to additional residential units, which were county council and then the local councils are considering. So we put a clear language in the draft bylaw that would not allow for a short-term rental operator to use additional residential units for, for that purpose, that it would be, those units would remain as part of the long-term rental stock once they were built and occupied. So the other thing that we're going to do now, as, as per council's direction, is to go to the area municipal councils to present, present the draft bylaw as well as the, the, the MATT tax. Scott and I are arranging those sessions in October. And we have one already scheduled and we're confirming the next ones as well. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
A couple of comments from myself. First, I was also really pleased to see the clarification on floating accommodations because I know that's becoming an increasing concern across the county. I, I'm just to be absolutely clear on the, on the bunkies. You're right, we did have quite a bit of conversation and it was my understanding that we weren't, we were not going to allow monkeys to be rented out. But I, I also understood, and obviously I must have been wrong, that if you rented a property as a whole, if, say, the kids wanted to sleep in the bunkie, that they would be able to do that. But, but the planners are suggesting that that is not, should not be the case.
That's correct.
Okay. And just an update on the, I, I thought that we had already moved forward with, with putting out an RFP on provider, service providers. So where are we with that?
Well, I, I know the, the, the financial department's been working, working on developing that. We did have a discussion with the, our municipal colleagues with regards to what should be in that RFP. And that, that information was taken away for development of the RFP. I don't know exactly what the status of it in terms of its release, but I know it's being worked on.
Questions from council? Councillor Carter.
Two, two things. Two things. One is, I don't think that we should put in the cost of the license of the $500 at this point. And, and we should leave that to be determined until we get that RFP back. You know, if, if, for instance, a township had 100 rentals, that would be $50,000 in fees that they would get from licensing, but it costs more than that to, to operate the program, then, you know, that's, that shouldn't be the case. So until we get this RFP and we have a budget for it, I don't think that we should determine what the licensing fee is. The second thing is, is that I, I didn't notice anything in here about an appeal fee. And I think that there should be a fee for somebody who wants to appeal. Because I'm certain that the county, if the county is running the appeals court, you know, they're going to charge us in the municipality for that service, which rightfully so. So there has to be, somebody needs to pay for that. And it should be the appellant, I think. And then the lastly, And then the lastly, I'm sorry, I can't now remember where I saw it, the whole idea of the of the fire inspection. Um there isn't a fee associated with the fire inspection and and there was something here in the wording that didn't really. Get to that and I think it should just be clarified. And if somebody is going, because if you go to IESO or you go to any of the other people. You're going to be paying fees for for each of those inspections. And uh and I don't want people to think that because this is a municipal service that you get it for free. Okay, it should be like the fire inspection will be at the standard. The standard rate, whatever our rate is at the time. Or when, you know, when. So that was where my.
I I definitely agree that there should, that you know, there should be a consideration for an appeal fee. Um and 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 I don't know how that works, given that. That you know, that the bylaw itself will ultimately be adopted at the lower tier, but where the appeals process will be here. So. Um any, I don't know, any comments that you might make on that, Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council. So. Uh the the first point of uh about the five hundred dollars, that was an early suggestion. And certainly, as we've been working with uh the service providers, they've they've sort of given us a a good snapshot on what. What uh uh is being charged out there. And so the uh the fee, I would say, uh should be re-. Reflect of of sort of an average of what a uh uh the cost to to rent uh one of the SSTRs here. Uh in the county, it should reflect, you know, a percentage of that, let's say. Uh with regards to um. Uh the inclusion of inspection fees and so on and so forth, that uh really has its. Uh place in a T uh uh if he's in a tariff bylaw, uh it's where I say that would go, but it certainly um. You know, you know, we have similar types of fees that we use for charge for services in the planning department. And I know in my discussions with the building inspectors. Uh in the fire department locally, I actually have a good scan of what they charge for those services. So it would simply. Be rolled into that from a local perspective uh when it comes to the appeal. Uh and again, that would uh. So for example, we have an appeal uh fee right now. I believe it's three hundred dollars for somebody who doesn't get their permit on time for the shoreline bylaw. So we could uh sort of use that as a benchmark for anything. Uh within the STR, uh just a point on fees, uh you know, when you look at application fees, I don't know if. Uh county council sought to heard that Aurelia now is uh licensing uh short term rentals. Their fee is two thousand dollars uh per license. So. Thank you very much.
Other questions, councillor Ryle and then councillor Fury?
I was just wondering if uh if it makes sense to just take all of the fees and perhaps even the penalties and move them into that separate category. That way we can review them on a regular basis, be it annually, semiannually, or whenever it is. Without having to go back and completely, you know, pass an amendment to the bylaw itself.
You don't want to have a fee structure within the bylaw because it does lead, if you want to change it every year, it does lead to amendments to that bylaw. So it'll show up. What what we show as a bylaw uh fee now for licensing is really suggestive, but that would be ironed out and solidified once the. Uh area municipalities decide to enact their bylaws.
Councillor Fury?
Well, my question's on the appeal. If you win the appeal, you should get your fee back. Is that reasonable?
That would be up to the local councils to decide.
If you're right to start with. That we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, despite the fact that, you know, your administration has put work into the.
Yeah.
Into appeal.
But not his fault.
Um councillor McKechnie?
Yes, uh I've been to quite a few uh cottage association meetings this uh summer. And I was at one just uh about a week ago. And uh there was a large number of people up there that were uh complaining about the short term rental policy in every aspect. And I was trying to explain to them, you know, uh that we were gathering a lot of this knowledge from other municipalities and lawyers and we were getting. Like a lot of advice from people who have set policies in place, but they didn't want to hear any part of it. Um there's a, it was a very large group there, uh not not that we're complaining, but there there were uh but there was a small group of people that were. Uh saying that it's money grab for for us to and we're creating bigger government and on and on. And so I I said to them that I would take this message to the county and here I am delivering that message. Now, nobody spoke up that they were for the uh short term rental, but when I got home, my phone was just lit up. With uh people telling me that you please won't uh follow through with the shoreline policy. I mean, this short term rental policy. So um I I've just conveying the message that my constituents told me to do. So. Um like I say, it was quite a heated meeting. It was the first time that uh there was a lot of negativity in regard to our short term rental policy. Thanks very much.
I thank you for that. You know, I I I do think that uh that we recognize that there are mixed feelings um about about the the proposed bylaw and that uh. I I it's my opinion so far uh from, I mean, I've also attended quite a few lake association meetings and. For the most part, they seem very supportive of us moving forward with it, although there are a number of uh. Of groups that that are not as supportive. Um but we're at this point now, so I think we'll carry forward. Did you have a comment?
Only only to say, Warden, that uh we have had a number of people reach out. Sorry, um only to say, Warden, that we've had a number of people reach out to us. Um expressing some concerns about the bylaw and asking they were concerned that it would be passed today, which we. You know, that clearly wasn't the intent, but um you know, I I think you'll. My understanding is that there, you know, you'll be hearing from from that segment of our population soon. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Stone? Um could I have then a mover in a second or to receive his report in the recommended uh amendments, councillors, Sherry and Carter?
So I have tried to specify the amendments, so.
Okay.
Bear with me if I don't get there. Um sorry. Uh move by councillor Fury, second by councillor Carter. Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives a September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three planning report PLN dash fifty-one dash two thousand twenty-three entitled short term rentals update. That the proposed fees be removed from the draft bylaw. And that an appeal fee be included in the draft bylaw. And finally, that wording be reviewed to ensure fees could be charged for fire and other inspection services.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Uh next up is Public Works. First is your um September status report.
Yes, good morning, Warden and council. I just wanted to start with uh thanks to our staff in Public Works over the last few months. We've been rather short-staffed both outside and inside, a lot of people covering, getting things done. And maybe to councillor Shell's uh comment about, you know, it's difficult to find some staff. We've. Tried to replace one position in two competitions. We're still trying. So we're working with HR on some different uh strategies to get employees to to help with things. Also, thanks to Mr. Rutter for covering for me and a councillor too as as well. Uh so with that. Our capital projects are in good shape. Uh we have completed the Good Iron Bridge. Uh the hot mix projects are complete, including pavement markings. Our surface treatment is complete except for pavement markings. Uh we're just working with a contractor to get those done. The cracked ceiling that's on here that we were waiting for it to start. County Road One was actually completed already and uh we're hoping that uh County Road five oh three will be started tomorrow. And with that, I guess uh we've also got our recent tenders and our maintenance that's ongoing. We're getting. Uh through the fall and getting ready for winter uh operations coming up. We've got sand completed in all of our yards except for Inglesby. That will be coming soon. And mechanical brushing is underway on County Road fifteen. Uh and also, I guess we also released uh. The RFP for the pickup purchase that council pre-approved the twenty twenty-four money. Uh we also have a report later that uh. Our corporate finance will talk about for the acquisition, the loader that council also approved in uh June. So thank you very much and open any questions on the report.
Uh questions for the uh on the public work status report? Just particularly interested in seeing us getting to work on the building across the road. Um so I look forward to some news about that.
Yes, uh actually, Warden, with that, uh for some news, we're working on the RFP. Uh just started that this morning. I'm working with uh some consultants in Toronto on developing those terms of reference. So. Just moving forward now that I'm back uh to get that going and uh bring some options and and ideas to council for their input.
Thank you. Um could I then have a mover in a second or to receive the public work status report, councillors Burton and McKechnie?
Move by councillor Burton, the second by councillor McKechnie, be resolved that the September two thousand twenty-three status report on capital projects. Operations and approve and approvals and road maintenance be received for information by Halliburton County Council.
All in favor? That's carried. Um next is your uh is the follow-up report on the drainage concerns that were raised uh on County Road One.
Uh yes, Warden, and again, thanks to Mr. Rutter for uh drafting a report after the delegation in August. I think uh the report's fairly clear that uh maintenance staff were or were in are aware of that situation. With myself being new to the uh the county, I was not aware of that specific issue, but everything else in the report uh follows. I think that uh. Our manager of operations, who is now our deputy director, met with the. School board staff and made some improvements. So I think it's a known situation. Uh I think. Mr. Rutter left the uh recommendations open to see how staff, how council would like to proceed. Uh we do not have the report from the delegation, so we can't directly comment on that.
Any questions on that report, councillor Carter?
So just. Just to be. Clear from what we have, this is not our issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. I. Would you mind if I, you mind if I?
Well, maybe if I add one piece and then uh follow up. We're actually the people in the middle, so there's an upstream and a downstream issue. So it is impacting us. Our staff are aware. And we are monitoring the situation. However, you are correct, it's it's not completely our situation and Mr. Rutter can.
Yeah, with that. I mean, our obligation as a road authority is to make sure that uh water flows, uh you may redirect it, but the amount of water flows as it was originally intended before the road was inserted into nature. And um over the years, it was a larger basin and the water flowed back and forth between the two as wetter times. It was a bigger pool that smaller in drier times, it was less. And and there's nothing that, you know, in the road design or the maintenance of the culverts or anything like that. Um I spoke to one of our operators who'd been there forever and he said, doesn't remember ever having to clean out the culverts or anything. The beavers don't impact our culverts. They impact upstream. So what has happened over the years is that there's been filling on both sides, making essentially the basin smaller, which raises the water. Um that certainly impacts our operation because it does deteriorate the road quicker and. Uh you know, our previous director used to be saying a dry road is a happy road and obviously this road's not dry. And so it doesn't, it's uh it's important it gets addressed. Um I did contact our trustee, um who, you know, has long history with it and he was very sympathetic and and brought it to. Uh senior management's attention at the school board. Um certainly, our deputy director attended onsite with with senior staff uh from the school board and they have committed to doing. Uh you know, being much more diligent in maintenance of of it. And uh but yeah, it it's um. You know, I understand the rounds frustrations, I really do, and I understand that they feel like their finger pointing on both sides, but we really are literally in this case stuck in the middle and it it um. Um you know, hopefully the school board are much more diligent in the future and and uh and the problem goes away.
So ducks on the road are the consequences of other people's actions supposed to ours, we.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I don't know. Again, I I think there were some concerns about permits being issued and I. We certainly don't issue any permits for that area, allowing people to do things. Um the uh again, the rounds, they're, they made reference to a report that they had done, but they wouldn't share that report with us. So we really can't comment on its contents. Um and so um again, I I I sympathize with their frustrations. It certainly had an impact and obviously we have all heard of the. You know, a lot of the media that's gone around it, but um in in this instance, there's nothing out. You know, related to the design of the road or the maintenance of the road that's causing this concern.
Well, we certainly appreciate the follow-up work that's been done on their behalf. They obviously had reached the end of their rope with respect to uh this, so I hopefully will. See some positive results going forward. Um could I have a mover in a second or then to receive that to report councillor Carter? Second by councillor Fury.
Move by councillor Carter, second by councillor Fury, be resolved that Halliburton County Council receive. Received staff report PWS dash thirty-five dash two thousand twenty-three, following up on the County Road twenty-one drainage concerns and route and delegation follow-up.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh next, uh under administration reports is the correspondence summary listing. Did, thank you, Robert. Did anyone uh wish to support the, any of the correspondents there? Councillor Carter?
I. The uh the Madawaska one, uh this was brought up and discussed at AML. Um with the ex-minister. Um who had uh had said that, you know, about this is sort of uh. Uh I think slanted towards uh to women and at at the the question that was asked that AML. Was uh slanted towards women and people of color and uh the minister. I think correctly said that this is a general situation against anybody that's on. On council and its councillors behaving badly is uh kind of the uh the. It was the general gist of it and. The minister had said that they were, they had a number of situations where they have been asked. Uh as a department to have sent observers. To council meetings across Ontario. And uh which is something that, you know, he had never experienced before and uh said that they would gladly work with AML. And he never to try to, you know, see what could be done in this area. So I guess from my perspective, you know, I I think that particularly with a new minister in there who may. Not feel as committed to what the old minister said, we we should probably support this in general. Uh the idea of uh of uh of councillor behavior and the whole idea of the, you know, the integrity commissioner. You know, there's been numerous examples where integrity commissioners have made reports to councils. And then the councils just ignore them and in some cases have fired their integrity commissioner. Um so you know, the 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 basic model doesn't seem to be working in today's. In in today's climate, so. You know, generally giving our support for any action in this area, I think is is probably a good thing.
Um I I would have to say we had a fairly lengthy conversation about this in Ongkonkun Islands and. And and felt as you had stated that it is, it's a much more general concern. Um than than what's been put forward, but uh um do we have a second or to councillor Carter, uh councillor Ryle?
I should say, we're really blessed.
We really need you to speak up.
I I will, you second it.
Okay.
We're we're really blessed. We don't really have this problem. Councillor McKechnie is the only one that really gives staff any grief and and we've learned to tolerate him. So.
And you'd say that when I'm not there, right?
Move by councillor Carter, second by councillor Ryle, be resolved that Halliburton County Council acknowledges receipt of the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five correspondence from the township of Greater Madawaska, calling on the government of Ontario. To introduce legislation to strengthen municipal codes of conduct. And that this legislation include the recommendations from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and further that staff be directed to forward a letter indicating council's support.
All in favor? That's carried. And do we have a resolution to receive the correspondent? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the correspondent summary listing, councillors Fury and McKechnie?
Move by councillor Fury, second by councillor McKechnie, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the correspondence listing for the period of August tenth, two thousand twenty-three to September sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is a report about the acquisition of a loader. Good morning, Mrs. Robinson.
Good morning, Warden and Council. Um, due to vacation schedules, I prepared this report on behalf of the Public Works Department, not to delay the ordering or or delivery of this pre-approved loader. Um, similar to the procurement of the Baco earlier this year, uh, staff are recommending utilizing the local authority service, uh, purchasing group to secure, uh, competitive price for the pre-approved twenty twenty-four loader. The estimated cost of a loader replacement, uh, was approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an expected twelve-month delivery timeline. Uh, through LAS, staff have received a formal response, uh, from Tormont Cat with a total procurement value of three hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars with an estimated delivery of March twenty twenty-four.
Any questions? Uh, could I have a mover in a second or then to move forward with that, councillors Carter and Shell?
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Shell, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three staff report, uh, supply of loader. Further, that Halliburton County Council award the contract for the supply of the loader to Tormont Cat for the bid amount of three hundred and nine thousand thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents plus applicable taxes. And finally, that staff be directed to present a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to execute the agreement.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Um, and next is the sale of county property, and I believe Mr. Rutter is reporting on that.
Uh, yes, Warden Danielson, um, we, uh, as outlined in the report, a number of years ago, the county acquired a piece of property uh, to, uh, to operate as a or to extract gravel. We've operated that very successfully over the last number of years. Um, the agreement at the time was that when the county was done extracting gravel, they would, uh, transfer that property back to the owners. Um, they were two brothers, as outlined in the report, Jack and Roy Roberts. Um, they have now indicated the county is finished. We have rehabilitated the property and surrendered the gravel license or the aggregate license. Um, they are now indicating that they would like the property transferred back to their daughter, one of their daughters, Trina. And so, um, we we do have a formal, uh, disposal of surplus property bylaw. But because this agreement was made prior to that passing, um, it it does not apply. So we don't have to follow the process we would normally follow in this regard.
Any questions? I could have a mover in a second or then to approve, moving forward with that, councillors Burton and Fury?
Moved by councillor Burton, second by councillor Fury. Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives staff report, CLA, C, CLK dash twenty dash two thousand twenty-three, that Halliburton Council, County Council direct the land that the lands described as Part Lot Ten, Concession Twelve, designated as Part One on Plan nineteen R dash two six seven six. Geographic township of Dudley now in the municipality of Dizart at all be transferred to the original owners as agreed upon at the time of the property acquisition. Further, that in accordance with correspondence received by the original owners, that Trina Roberts be the recipient of the said transfer. And finally, that this, that staff be directed to present a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to execute all documents related to the property transfer.
All in favor? That's carried. Um, and finally, a report on the proposed statement of work for the master services agreement of, uh, with nine one one.
Thank you, Warden. Um, again, this is, uh, this came a little bit out of the blue for us, but we, uh, we've managed to, um, I guess, negotiate some changes to the agreement. Um, I had discussed some of those concerns with council, uh, in closed session, but now we're in a position to move forward with this. Um, we, uh, this, this is a little different than the original, uh, agreement that we had with Northern nine one one. And and just to to refresh your memory, uh, these are the, this is the company that actually answers the nine one one call and then pass that on to ambulance, police or fire dispatch. So, um, we, uh, we were able to, um, soften, I guess, the the indemnification wording that was proposed in the initial draft. Major changes, I guess, the original agreement was fairly open-ended. This is a three-year agreement with, uh, automatic renewal if parties are satisfied with the existing terms. And we certainly have been up to now. Um, early cancellation is possible, but the party requesting the termination would be required to pay liquidated damages equal to six months of fees. The, uh, there there is strengthened indemnification clauses, uh, benefiting both parties that were added. And, uh, the liability insurance requirements, uh, in the previous agreement were ten million dollars, now being reduced to five million dollars. Uh, the Director of Corporate Services and I had a meeting with our insurer. And so I brought this up to him and he indicated that he believed that the lower coverage amount was sufficient to protect the county, uh, taking into account the level of risk and the lack of any claims history in this regard. So, um, we are, uh, we continue to work. We've heard, uh, from two of our local municipalities that they are able to meet their, uh, commitments under this. Um, they, those commitments haven't changed, but the people have changed. And so I have reached out to the local municipalities, wanting to make sure that everybody is still, uh, meeting those requirements. Um, and I don't anticipate any problem with that, but I I, uh, you know, it's something I'll I'll certainly need in the next, in the very short while, uh, that confirmation. The fee is, uh, there is an increase in the fee. We did expect this, uh, because they have had to upgrade much of their equipment to accommodate the the new next generation nine one one. And I think those of you who are around this table, we did talk about that last year about this time. Um, and so the increase in fees doesn't surprise us, uh, and and will certainly be included in our draft budget moving forward.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or to receive the report? Councillors Carter and, uh, sorry, Graham.
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Ryle, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives report, CLK dash nineteen dash two thousand twenty-three, proposed statement of work and revised master services agreement, Northern nine one one. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw authorizing the CAO clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the corporation.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, we'll now move into closed session. So if I could have a mover in a second or to do exactly that? Councillors Fury and Carter?
Moved by councillor Fury, second by councillor Carter, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council enter into closed session for the following reasons. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations or employee negotiations, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, welcome back to the regular session. Um, coming out of clothes, just a comment that the council uh, did review the tentative agreement with QP four four three five, and there will be a bylaw, um, associated with that brought forward. And under bylaws, um, the first one being, um, a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement, Dr. Vince.
And our cherry.
Our cherry. Could I have a mover in a second or for that? Councillors Carter and Rael?
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Ryle, be it resolved that bylaw four one nine six, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Dr. Vince Archery as a licensed physician for the County Community Paramedicine Program, be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Second is a bylaw authorizing signing authority to certain signing officers of the corporation. Could I have a move in a second or? Councillors Rael and second by councillor Burton?
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor Burton, be it resolved that bylaw four one nine seven, being a bylaw governing the execution of documents on behalf of the corporation of the County of Halliburton and to delegate signing authority to certain signing officers of the count corporation be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is the bylaw to authorize the acquisition of a Tormont Cat. Could I have a mover in a second or? Councillors Fury and Carter?
Moved by councillor Fury, second by councillor Carter, be it resolved that bylaw four one nine eight, being a bylaw to authorize an agreement with Tormont Cat for the supply of one loader, be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, next is a bylaw to authorize the sale of land. Could I have a mover in a second or Councillors Carter? And Fury?
Moved by councillor Carter, second by councillor Fury, be it, be it resolved that bylaw four one nine nine, being a bylaw to authorize the sale of land by the County of Halliburton to Trina Roberts, be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Northern nine one one. Mover in a second or please? Councillor Shell and Burton?
Moved by councillor Shell, move, uh, second by councillor Burton, be it resolved that bylaw four two zero zero, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Northern nine one one, be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, finally, a bylaw to authorize an agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local four four three five. I'm over in a second or please? Councillors Rael and Fury?
Moved by councillor Ryle, second by councillor Fury, be it resolved that by that bylaw four two zero one, being a bylaw to authorize an agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local four four three five, be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Are there any notice of motions? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or to confirm the proceedings of council? Councillors McKechnie and Burton?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, second by councillor Burton, be it resolved that bylaw four two zero two, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of county council be considered to be read a first, second, third time, finally passed, and the seal of the corporation be affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, could I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor McKechnie? Councillor Carter?
Moved by councillor McKechnie, second by councillor Carter, be it resolved that the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.